Yep.
Hey.
I'm always afraid to leave it.
I don't know, but why if I ever know what it is they will block.
Yeah.
I think it'd be a hard time if they would all bring you. That's been my biggest heartache. The difference in.
It's still holders being.
For Ross's weather wind hit.
We've seen that, we've seen that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was a little different.
I saw you walked away.
Yeah. It was like that bag.
Versatile.
They did hit, yep. It's on.
There. So you got.
A question.
Across the. It really.
So.
Which is much.
We'll be leaving, but just.
Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Notice of this meeting was given in advance thereof by publishing one time in the Keith County News and posting at the city administration building as shown by the certificate of posting notice. Notice of this meeting was simultaneously given to the presidents and all members of the council. Availability of the agenda was communicated in the advanced notice in the notice to the president and council of this meeting. All proceedings hereafter will be taken while this convened meeting is open to the attendance of the public. This meeting is being convened in accordance with the Open Meetings Act. Copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the southeast corner of the council chambers. Any person wishing to address the council may do so by standing. When you are recognized, please go to the podium. Please sign the sign in sheet located on the podium and say your name, the organization, interest, or person you represent before you begin speaking. Thank you. Roll call.
Block.
Eric.
Dupierre.
Eric.
Crasty.
Here.
Laughlin.
Here.
Weddington.
Here.
Uh, on the consent agenda, we have the minutes of the regular meeting held November twenty fifth, twenty twenty five. Under parks, we have the twenty twenty five of Western Diamonds overflow parking lot overlay contract award. Near street, we have the city maintenance agreement number forty three. Our street, the certificate of compliance maintenance agreement number forty three. Waste water request for proposal and there's skater systems improvements in the water request for proposal for the skater system improvements.
Move this.
Go ahead, go ahead. I, I just want to remind the council that is there, if there's any specific item on the agenda item you would like to pull off and discuss separately, we can. Not we can uh approve them since these are just normal business things. Spend more time on the meat and potatoes.
I'd move to approve the consent agenda second.
We have a motion by Councilman Block and a second by Councilman Dupierre to approve the consent agenda. There is uh no discussion. If council, please vote.
Five yes.
Motion carried. Uh, we have no public hearing scheduled for tonight. Uh, public forum, there is nothing scheduled. Is there anyone here wishing to address the council under public forum? Uh, on a topic that's not on the agenda? If not, we'll move on to the financial report in November twenty twenty five.
Okay, for the month ended November thirtieth, twenty twenty five, the revenues were nine hundred fifty five thousand eight hundred ninety eight dollars and thirty cents. Expenses for the month were two million seventeen thousand four hundred fifty two dollars and sixty two cents. Fiscal year to date, revenues have been two million seventeen thousand nine hundred seventy dollars and thirty nine cents. And fiscal year to date expenses have been three million five hundred sixty thousand eight hundred seventy nine dollars and forty seven cents. Fiscal year to date, the city has received a hundred and forty two thousand nine hundred twenty four dollars and thirty six cents from franchise fees, six thousand one hundred thirty three dollars and fifty two cents from telephone occupation taxes, and fifty six thousand eighty four dollars and five cents from hotel occupation taxes. And then on the unencumbered, L B eight forty balances a negative two hundred forty two thousand six hundred eighty seven dollars and sixty eight cents. Do you have any questions on the financial report?
Early in the year, but we'll get back to you.
Okay.
Uh, there are no questions for Jane. We'll move on to uh rescheduling of the council meetings. Uh, scheduled on December twenty third, twenty twenty five, there've been some uh council members that have had a conflict because of holidays coming in, so we thought uh that we would move this meeting to December thirtieth uh this following Tuesday. Any thoughts, comments, I mean council members?
No issue, same time.
Same time, same place.
I'll move to reschedule the December twenty third, twenty twenty four, seven P M regular meeting of the city of Ogallala or for the city, the Ogallala City Council at seven P M Tuesday. Um to Tuesday at seven P M, uh, December thirtieth, twenty twenty. Whoop, hold on.
Okay.
These numbers are different.
Yep, second.
Yep, so that's gonna be for twenty twenty five.
Fine, great. We have a motion by Councilman Laughlin and a second by Councilman Block to move the meeting to December thirtieth, twenty twenty five. There is no further discussion. Good council, please vote.
Five yes.
Motion carried. Uh, the meeting is being moved and thankful we have the local media here with us to make note of that. Uh, recommendations, department, sports committees, we have community development, Keith County Area Development Office update, Mary Wilson. Uh, yeah, stack.
Hello, everyone.
Good evening, Lou.
So would you be so. On, on please. And then the same with this.
Stay cool.
Did we make it around?
Twenty.
You have extra. You like it or not. Okay, so when I pass around um a copy of the quarterly report that you guys received in your board packet, as well as a copy of our most recent annual report. Um first, I should back up Mary Wilson, executive director for K C A D here to give our quarterly report. Sorry, forgot words. Uh, the low details. And so we're going to dive in and go through the annual report at the same time as a quarterly report was to avoid duplication. Um, first and foremost, one of the most exciting things that happened at the K C A D office this year is welcoming Gentry Welch to our team. She's been there for just over a year. Out on maternity leave now, which we're excited for, um, but she has really helped elevate our office, as you'll see in the annual report. Um, the first section is talking about marketing in motion, um, really helped us push um our presence, share all the success stories in the community, um, really elevated what, what we're putting out um, from a transparency, uh, helping with our updates with our flow desk or social media or website. Um, so she's been wonderful to have on board, very, very thankful to have her. Great. Sure. Molly Jeffries continues for strong small business support. Um as a result of the ending of our participation in E three energizing entrepreneurial ecosystems. That was a pilot program for the Nebraska Community Foundation that we participated in. Um, Molly is entering into her third year, right? Her third year of this focus support, um, in which we fundraised um, extra dollars to support this small business focus effort. Um, currently she has twelve active clients. She's working on three business transitions. Um, she's made a great impact in the small business environment here in Keith County, and we're very, very thankful for everything she has done. Um, we received over four hundred and seventy thousand dollars in um grant assistance for small businesses since Molly started. I don't have my clappers, and I'm clap, clap, clap. Um, that's amazing. We lead the state in the amount of funds received per capita from those grown Nebraska grants that you guys have heard me talk about, and so I'm very, very proud of all of the work that she has done.
Tell me, Mary, what a business transition is?
Uh, businesses that are selling. That will be selling new ownership. Sure. We continue our quality of place enhancements, and that's really become a focus of economic development, especially in rural communities as people can choose where they live, work from home. Um, first impressions is huge. I believe Molly and I discussed this today. Since we started our first impressions efforts, um, K C A D has gifted to the city of Ogallala over a hundred fifty thousand dollars um, in quality of place enhancements, but they were talking about murals, um, the downtown hanging baskets. Um, the water wagon, um, over a hundred fifty thousand dollars. So a pretty big impact. We get compliments every year on, on the work that those volunteer groups do. As well as the creative district, um, that was something new for us that Molly took on, was a tremendous job. Sculpture Walk Across Nebraska, I believe, was a huge hit. And they just went through and picked um the new sculptures for this next year, and so we're excited to see those come into the community.
Mary, how many uh communities took place in the sculpture walk?
I know that. Molly questions. There's eight now. We became the sixth.
Yeah, there's eight now. There you go. Great question, Ken. Thank you, Molly. Uh, our workforce development initiatives continue in partnership with Miss Plains Community College and the local schools, specifically with our um Excel tours exploring careers in education locally, as well as our progressive business group series. I will be launching that series um, in January, starting with a marketing um class, Lana Shaw. Um, there will be six classes in twenty twenty six. We're gonna start promotion actually for that Friday, um, so keep your eyes out for those, those free workshops that we offer. Housing continues to be a huge focus as we contract with the Keith County Housing Development Corporation to develop housing um, in Ogallala and Keith County. We currently have all of our loan funds allocated to build workforce housing homes, as opposed to one point six million is allocated. Three of those homes are currently being built within the city limits, three of those homes outside the city limits of Ogallala. Um, so some tremendous impact there. Since January of twenty twenty two, we've supported the completion of eleven homes in Keith County with that fund. Um, so we'll be up to seventeen when these six get complete, so. Uh, pretty exciting progress there when it comes to housing. We know that housing is a huge issue across the state. The middle school project continues. Um, we are sitting with a great shell, something that is of more value than when we purchased it right now, something that can be done with it, uh, working on that next loan income housing tax credit application. We actually have a meeting on the eighteenth with the developer to finalize kind of who needs to do what, cross our eyes or cross our teeth and dot our i's before uh next application is due. Um, any questions? I'm gonna cover some else.
Mary, what are the source of funds for your housing development outside of the city?
And the county contributes funds also.
Okay. How much, where do they contribute?
And the county approved seven thousand five hundred. Um, and given that for the past three or four years.
Yeah, Harry, so the insights you guys obtained from your business retention and expansion.
Uh huh.
Program, um, just can we expand on some of those are, and is there a big difference between what you saw in twenty twenty four and twenty twenty five?
So from our business retention expansion visit for the Economic Development Certified Community um, certificate that we're responsible for maintaining, not for the city of Ogallala, just so everybody knows um, what those B R E is for. So the uh B R E is our business visits. We are required to conduct twenty five of those on an annual basis. We log those, uh, submit all of that information to the Department of Economic Development. Childcare, infrastructure, housing are huge pieces as well as workforce development that we're hearing our, that our businesses are needing. And that's been pretty consistent across the board.
But.
Yeah.
Of the kind of one point six million rural workforce housing funds, how much of that one point six stays in the city?
So there's three homes um that are being built within the city line in Ogallala. Depending upon what those loan amounts are, the max is two fifty per home that we come home. Our sweet spot has been learning two twenty five to two fifty on those homes.
And so then how many are uh outside the city? Are that so many homes or three? Three, three.
Mm-hmm. There have been the U T J that are outside city.
Oh.
Are those uh projects within the city limits? They getting TIF or L B eight forty funds or just housing development funds?
The two two that we currently have contracts are part of the Slansburg subdivision, so they indirectly receive benefit of tax and commit financing.
Yeah.
Um I believe they are also seeing support through L B eight forty in that cost share for the house, the Housing and City growth fund. Where the Housing Development Corporation provides a four thousand dollar incentive. And then that's matched to L B eight forty. And that thirty two thousand was allocated several years ago, I believe.
Those are both up on Warrior Drive.
Correct.
And then the new businesses, um, those book challenges or barrier that they facing?
New businesses?
Yes.
Um work force. Um, if they are sole proprietor, uh, Molly's done a great job in having meetings with them in getting their business plan put together. I think that's one of the biggest hurdles that Molly sees when they come in to the K C A D office is not having a business plan. And Molly might be able to provide some insight on that. She's done a great job in helping get them prepared as well as financing. Having quite a few discussions with small businesses when it comes to utilizing our revolving loan fund for. Yeah.
Is part of the workforce problem, go back to the housing shortage here in Ogallala?
Oh, I think, I think it's all time together.
I mean, that's where I was going. I mean, it all.
Yeah. And I think you go back to COVID and a lot of people realize I don't wanna work, or I can work from home instead of go to an office every day, so. Any other question?
So on the workforce side too, um, is it lack of workforce? Is it a quality issue? Was it, do you hear if it's a pay issue, benefits issue, or just?
All of the above. Um, I think that depending on who's looking for what position, are they getting qualified candidates? Are you having people that want to work? Um, and then the benefits piece also comes into play, especially when you can work remotely for companies that might offer a great benefit package. I think that that's something that uh employees consider. Any other question?
What's the latest on the uh middle school project?
Um, so like I said, uh, we've got a show of the building, so uh, the majority of the demo is done. I know the newer part they need to still clean out, but getting the old part done was their, their top priority. Um, so next Thursday, Ryan's coming out. We're having a kind of a planning briefing uh with the housing board on the eighteenth.
As I understand, they did receive the, the uh low income housing or not the loan passing text of the, the N I F A.
No, that's correct, the housing tax credit. So, um, what we focused the application on was a health and housing initiative that N I F A uh, put forth, uh, tied to the low income housing tax credits during the application cycle. N I F A did not receive funding to support a health and housing program. And so they didn't even, they did not score that portion of the application. Uh, when we look at the scoring rubric, we lost by half of a point. So there is an application awarded at sixty point five and our application was sixty.
So is, i- i- is there intent to go back to N I F A for additional funding?
Yeah.
So that gonna be a year from now then?
That time, so the application will be due in May.
Good.
And September is when they.
August.
August, September time.
Yep, yep. Your times the chart.
I did walk through that middle school after the annual K C A D meeting and it looks awesome up there. Uh the flooring on that old basketball court is there. I mean, it, it.
It's a beautiful.
You have to walk through it. You need to walk through it. It is awesome.
It, it's ready to be developed.
It is.
Like I said, which is a lot farther along than when we first purchased it, so. Good.
Do you guys have a roadmap on how you're going to educate the citizens on the half cent infrastructure the next year?
Uh, I believe that that would be something that the city needs to invite us to have a conversation about.
So the social media, um, it was, we had a couple years ago. How successful do you think that's been? To, can you?
Um, when we utilize L B eight forty to advertise our fiber connection, Carol is is that what you're referencing? Yeah. Um, Jessup's a YouTube star. We know that he gets comments all the time about, hey, you're the guy.
So waiting for our royalty checks.
So we know people are seeing it, right? The target audience isn't necessarily us. Um, but we know people are seeing it. We know that development's booming out the lake. People wanting to, to live and work there, so. I, I think it's been successful.
Yeah, I thought travel and leisure do a great article for us this year.
Wasn't that awesome? Yeah. They did fantastic. Sean did great. Um, Sean in the chamber office did wonderful, hoping to put that together, so. Something for us to be proud of for sure. Yeah.
It seemed like at one of the K C A D meetings, I remember I remember if it was Molly or who it was, talked about the the hits on the website and it was huge.
Gentry, yeah. So Gentry has set all these metrics as far as we wanna grow our Facebook followers and our Instagram and our LinkedIn and his website. It's I don't think those are in our, in our, in our annual report, but we uh hit all of our goals by quarter two. So when she gets back, certainly set some new benchmarks for the next year.
Well, speaking of benchmarks, how does, how do you guys know about that process of determining that you had a successful year in your role?
The K C A D has had a successful year. Um, I think I would also ask the city to reflect on that and look at the development, uh, the growth that we've seen. Um, housing is increasing. I have a beautiful Restrick Casino out south um, that has brought some great jobs and is also increase of the tax base, also helping the city's budget, I do believe. That's a positive thing. Um, the quality of place piece, I believe that our community has a lot of pride. The pride has grown tremendously since I stepped into this role. Uh, we're getting great feedback from other communities who are reaching out and asking for our input and our participation in collaborative discussions, and so um, all in all, we're hearing great positive things in our office. Any other questions? None? Okay.
Are, are there any other questions, comments?
Uh, update on the seventy eight unit apartment on Black South Town? What have we got going on there?
And that would be a city question. K C A D doesn't have a, a role in that project, so the city can feel supported.
Isn't that this right here though? In your report, the seventy eight, and it says you have investors interested?
Yeah, there's investors that call us and ask questions that we have no information, so we send them either to the city or connect to them to them.
So it's not your project, it's the city's project, so it should be, it'd be on your report?
So people ask us questions about it.
Got it, alright.
And I listed as a, it's obviously a project of interest. But as far as where the building's permitted and things is not interested, and see if I can't answer those questions. Any other question?
I don't see any at this time, but if we do, we know we can always call you.
Yes. Um, one more thing, Darryl, this might help in some of your metrics. I put together a little historical um booklet. It's about three hundred pages of K C A D's annual report, list of our achievements um, over the past ten, twelve years. Um, there's a printed copy. Jane and Kevin, I think you have one in your email also, um, for records, so. I sent it at about seven oh five, so you will have it.
Got it now.
Um, but as you guys are looking at, if you have any questions, um, don't hesitate to hire. I can also send it digitally if anybody else would like a copy.
I would like to thank you for the audit. We did see a copy of that, so. It's nice to see, it's nice to see an organization accountable.
It was my fault it was late, cause I had.
Ah, you're the one, okay.
I gotta take.
But you'll give me one from now on, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we, yeah, we have one every year. They're done. They're done every year, just like.
Right, but you'll give me a copy every year, not just to that member.
Sure.
Yeah. I mean, the previous year was fine, because I had, I review it, but I just didn't pass.
I'm guessing you haven't heard anything, but the Economic Development Certified Community Program is, is it still for real?
It is.
With all the changes.
Yes.
Recently.
So the E D C C Certified Community Program is something that the Department of Economic Development offers to communities in order to become certified and be kind of on their, their list, kind of list served to receive development opportunities. We maintain that. We have to do that every five years. Um, Ogallala is up for renewal in twenty twenty six. September is when our application is due. Ashley Gerlock sent me an email a couple weeks ago. She's on the D E D. And so, yeah.
That's been part of the whole rumor thing going around that they're gonna eliminate that and all these other things.
Even if that is eliminated, everything that's required in that E D C C uh
Good stuff.
Program is important stuff your economic development organization to be doing anyway. Any other question?
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mary.
Very much.
Thank, thank the board for attending.
Yeah.
It's nice, nice to see an audience. Uh any other board members have any comments they wish to make? Not we'll move on to.
I do.
Yeah.
So when, and do I just go through the rigmarole?
Yeah, have a sign in, please.
Uh, that's right. Dean Russell, uh, Seven Reimer Road. I'm representing as a K C A D board member and just a citizen of Ogallala. I just wanted to.
You're a citizen of Keith County.
And, and that too. There we go.
He, he live in the county, right?
What? Oh, just right outside, yeah. So thank you for the, thank you for the semantics. Thank you. Um, so the idea here is just um, the reason kind of why we're here, and I know uh Mary's here, is just to make sure that everyone has transparency on how involved the uh K C A D is with the community. Uh, as, and, and I know Kevin gets to see it from kind of that monthly standpoint, but it's a lot. I mean, it's, it's a lot of interconnections with people all around the community, all, all of us trying to help each other out. It's a big deal. And so, you know, the, I, I kind of was hesitant, you know, came on the board, just kind of to see what it was, and now in my tenure on the board, as I've gone through, uh, I would say that a lot of the stuff really gets done in partnership now, right? Now, they're not a standalone like K C A D. I know some people can just think, hey, it's just a standalone pillar, but it works with the city. It works with the local businesses. It works with the schools. It works with the major employers. And it's a big, strong pillar along with all the other ones. And to be honest, you know, we had uh been talking and Kevin's been great with transparency of like, hey, here's some ideas of what's coming up, and Steve has been too, just with uh, you know, what we're gonna do for budget next year and the ideas that, hey, uh, we have to take a look at everything just like you guys do, and that's, that's, that's great. So it's more of just being an advocate of showing you the amount of work that has gone in over the past couple of years. I mean, you look all around town in Ogallala and in Keith County, the amount of work that's been going in to make things better. The amount of work that's been going in to promote and sustain things that are going really well, to bring four hundred thousand, four hundred seventy thousand dollars in in three years to small business local effort. I don't think that happens without K C A D. Or if it does, it's really on the back of someone else that's driving them and maybe taking away other duties. And so just here to kind of give you, just like Mary did, some great transparency on why this is such an important organization. And I know you guys know that, and I know that you guys have worked with that, so I'm not saying anything you don't know. But as you're going in through, thinking about, you know, future budgets and, and, and things of that nature, um, this is one where I feel like if. But as you're going in through thinking about, you know, future budgets and 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 things of that nature, um this is one where I feel like if. If we cut short uh any of that um sort of future thinking, then I think we cut short kind of the future thinking of growth. I really do, um unless, you know, just the whole city can take that on, which I do think that they need partnerships, I do think. Cuz everyone's busy and everyone has a thousand jobs, so it's kind of one of those mini hands make light work. I understand that it takes a budget to do that, so it's it's doesn't, you know, go on deaf ears in that area, but that's what I just wanted to say, so thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Alright, I'm moving on, street, year end certification of street, city street superintendent, resolution twenty three twenty two.
Mr. President, this is our annual required certification, uh it gets us our eighteen thousand five hundred fifty four bucks. Bucks that we have but in this year's budget, so we have this uh off the consent agenda just because uh.
This is actually, that's the maintenance agreement, Kevin, this'll, this is the. The incentive for the street superintendent, so that's like the two thousand dollars.
Okay, it's not wrong, it's not eighteen thousand.
Dollar's up in the consent agenda.
Okay.
So it's two thousand, not eighteen thousand.
Two thousand dollars.
The eighteen thousand wasn't.
More of that rigmarole we have to go through here at the city. Okay, that is two this year like we did last year.
Yes.
Yes. So it'll be Nick and.
Nick.
Just Nick.
Nick.
Didn't we do two last year?
Well, we we had Kenny Pullman for part of the year and Nick for part of the year.
Okay.
They're both, we have two, we have actually two certified street superintendents.
Yes, that's my question, are we doing both? Just doing Nick? Thank you. But if we needed to. Bring in Kenny, he is.
Yes, he is certified.
He's certified now that that he could easily be moved into that position where we were. In a gap there for a while, yep, you're you're spot on, Scoob. Alright, it's two thousand dollars, not eighteen, uh and we'll correct the resolution.
Resolutions.
Resolution's right, my memo, my memo was right.
Any questions, comments, from council, further discussion?
I would introduce resolution twenty three twenty two and move for its adoption.
Resolution authorizing the city of Ogallala to sign the year end cer- certification of city street superintendent. Twenty twenty five.
Second.
Introduced by council in the lot, and we have a second by council in the lapland. There's no further discussion, council please vote.
Cause we're certifying the past year. And in January, we were on point in twenty six.
Yeah, I had a question about, the motion was for twenty twenty five, we've certified the prior year, not the ensuing herself. There's no further discussion, council please vote.
I guess.
Resolution, uh twenty three twenty two is hereby adopted. Right, uh moving on, under the court, city attorney. Our court city manager.
Only one item, Mr. President, uh a while back, we submitted a request to the Department of Roads to review the speed limits. On the west end of Ogallala, they have uh done some uh, they have done a study. I'll just read you what the reports that I got back from Department of Roads. Uh, the Branson Department of Transportation has reviewed the speed limit as requested on the west end of Ogallala. This traffic engineering study included review of the current speed limit, fifty mile an hour, crash history. Road and intersection geometric, slight sight distance. Observe vehicle speed, so there you can probably still see a camera down there on that end of town. And turning movements, please note that the observations were conducted on a day when the Ogallala lives market was active. The study concluded that a reduction in speed is not warranted at this time, and the regulatory speed limit will remain at fifty mile an hour. That's it, all you got.
Uh, could you please see that the people who were at the meeting requesting that, get a copy of that?
I will get that, and I will get, and I will get this to press.
Thank you.
Do you have enough lead on the apartment complex south of town?
They swing enough hammers to keep permit.
Yeah, I didn't see people on site.
It won't be open by the end of October. Well, maybe next year.
Could we, could we get them here?
Actually, I could try again.
Let's get, let's get him here, we, we have some questions we need to ask him.
I mean, they're not obligated to come.
They're not obligated, but.
But I can ask.
Yeah, we, I'd I'd like to hear it from them. What, that that's so frustrating to see it out there with all the development going on and this. Tyvek gripping off these buildings, so.
I would like to just ask that if they happen to lose their permit again, that the city does not issue them a new permit until they come in and speak to council. Is that possible?
You just did.
We, we attempted that, uh they were gonna buy a new permit, it was either buy a new permit or come in and talk to the council. They chose just buy a new permit.
And we can't refuse the permit?
We could, I could look into refusing the permit, but that would be, that would be illegal.
Yeah, but most likely not, we've got to. Until it becomes a.
Ordinance, an ordinance issue as long as they comply with the ordinance.
Until that would become a nuisance, or or an attractive nuisance that was probably there, we're getting damn close.
We have, we need issues, then they get compliance, and we dance on the edge of the pen.
As soon as we, as soon as we start getting homeless in there, you know, it's gonna become. I think we start, better start pulling some teeth out then.
Yeah, I, I absolutely agree.
Okay.
Or maybe we need to relook at some word, you know, the ordinance, have a more council flexibility in issues like this.
So we, yeah, we, I. Not being on the agenda, we probably shouldn't be discussing this in in great length, but I I think we should be keeping this on the agenda. Uh, so we can say updated on this, uh and get these people in here, they they need to talk to us. And if if we.
I will reach out to them.
We need to gather, get together with Mike, we need to come up with a strategy because. It's going on, what, over two years now?
Permit was pulled in twenty twenty P.
Oh, gee, my bad, man.
Is that something we can just add to the next agenda, so we can?
Sure, absolutely. While you're on there. She did, got it. Uh, with that, we have uh, uh, it's not. Time for reports from city council members, and they have something urgent they need to put on here, if not, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Salute.
Well, second.
We have a motion by Councilman Lafflin, and the first motion of Councilman Weddington after his appointment. As a second, uh, no further discussion, and I'd like to welcome uh. Daryl Weddington back to council, he'll be a a great asset in the city. He's still, he's still.
It's the milk.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I guess.
We're adjourned.